We're ready.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Palery Newville Area School Board to order at 7:05. Can we have the vocal?
Michael Eddy?
Here.
Tara Leroy?
Here.
Doris Parsons?
Here.
Jean Reed?
Here.
Mitzi Reschowski?
Here.
Zachary Rakowski?
Here.
Cristiano Williams?
Yeah.
We have a forum. I would read the district mission statement, "To ensure that students excel within Latin virtue, inspired by innovative educators, so engage and challenge each individual." Would you all join me for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
One second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. Public comments. I do not believe received any via email. Is there anyone here?
No.
No. Board monitoring is next. And it's presentation on Eagle Elementary Wraparound Care.
And before it even starts, I just want to say that we're very appreciative of Amy. She is here earlier than any staff member in our building and then often stays late if there isn't anyone available in the afternoon. She seamlessly handles parents, plates money, you know, finances, all those types of things. Later, around here, and she does so very politely and enrollment only grown, and we're absolutely just about half her as well.
Do you want me to move somewhere? Round it? All right. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Amy Muse. I teach first grade this year. Who knows what it'll be next year? But hey, it's all the fun, right? I do love kids, so obviously I don't mind twenty-five mornings with them. Monday morning this week was quite a while ago. I'm just gonna say, I don't know what they all ate over the weekend, but they were like running. That was in the morning, too. So, so our wraparound care program at Eagle, we start at six in the morning and go to seven fifty. Most of my morning people don't get there till about six-twenty. So that gives me like a moment to, you know, get in the door and do all that big stuff, get my computer up and running so I'm ready for school. And then we go until when the bell rings. At seven-thirty, when breakfast starts, I do dismiss students for breakfast if they choose to go. And again, that's with parent permission, so we don't want sending kids down there that just want to go, you know, maybe on the front. And then our after-school program starts at two-fifty. Our staff person, one of our staff people gets there at two-forty-five to make sure she's there, and then that goes until five-thirty. Every once in a while, a couple minutes later, but pretty much our families are really good about getting picked up on time. There we go. All right, we serve a total of twenty-five families in the Palery Eagle Area School District. We had thirty-five students enroll, fourteen students are signed up for the morning, and thirty-one students in the afternoon. We do have a few students who do morning and afternoon, and so that's why the numbers don't quite match up. But the majority are usually, you know, want either morning or afternoon. Lots of doubled in families, you know, a couple kids. So you're definitely serving a really important need for those families. Our staff includes five licensed elementary teachers. I've been able to staff the afternoon care for the most part with teachers. And then also I have one graduate from our district. She just graduated last year, and she isn't necessarily going into childcare, but she works great for kids. And she's really honestly, she joined us for a while last year while she was still at high school and has continued to do a really nice job, you know, finding what she needs to do to talk to parents and things like that. So she's been, she's been our mainstay. She's a solid person. Last week, when she was on vacation, the kids were like, oh, she's not here again. They were like cheering when she was back yesterday, so. Students are dropped off and picked up from the makerspace room in Eagle. So just a quick view of what that room is. Again, we can pretty much fit thirty, thirty-five kids in there if we have to. It does get a little crowded. It's quite noisy if you happen to come by when they're first getting in there after school. They're all letting up a little bit of steam. We do get them seated when they come in. Some kids are working on homework right away. We get snack out, and then we offer some other activities after we get everybody settled and accounted for. But the first few minutes are, they're pretty loud, so we have a lot of choices for things to do once we get moving, so. We head to the gym. I had to get this little girl because it was so cute because she was working so hard to dribble that basketball, and she kept going and going and going. So, I mean, it just really shows, like, you know, it's not just the big kids that are playing. The little kids play, the big kids sometimes come and help them. They'll get a game going sometimes. Sometimes we play like folder games, but the big kids help the little kids, too. So it's really nice to see the little kids getting an opportunity to try some things they might not try otherwise, but then also, you know, the big kids getting a chance to kind of be, how matters would be a little bit helpful. Anyway, that one I just have it. She's so cute. We do go outdoors when weather permits. When it's colder, the kids don't necessarily want to go outside again right away, and it does depend if there was a lot of snow, then their mittens and their rickets are all wet. So we'll go outside if, if it seems like the kids really want to go outside. Otherwise, definitely spring and fall, we're outside every day rather than the gym. Using the gym can be a little, a little hairy when they have a lot of like energies they use up. But if not, one of the other things we do is a teacher will take like half of the kids and take them to a classroom to play. And so half the kids are in the classroom, half the kids might be in the gym, or half the kids might stay in wraparound care and do something there. So it really depends on to which, as to which teachers are working and what they feel comfortable doing. But this is an example of one of the, again, it's truly a lower elementary classroom. The kids get a little bit more time to play, and they even help clean up, which is, I know, nobody else would believe that, right? And then activities, we do have snack provided morning and afternoon. Those are just some examples. We do get some, some of the things that healthy community network provides us. We share some of those items, but I also try to buy, you know, snacks that the kids like but don't have a ton of sugar. You know, they want the fruit snacks, but I was like, oh, no. Fruit snacks are bomb in an instant. But I try to offer a fruit, and then also something, you know, a little party or something to go with it. Morning snacks, sometimes the kids take advantage of it, sometimes they choose to go to breakfast. It's, again, up to each kid as to what they want to do. So I got one little friend that comes in every day, and he's like, I want to go to breakfast, but his mom says you can't, so. But I have this for breakfast, and he's decided that's okay, so. We do offer some homework help. It is kind of loud sometimes in the area where we offer that, so we do sometimes move out through the hallway with a couple kids that are working on something. Today, a student asked if she could come back and work with me in my room while I was getting ready to come here, and so we sat. I kept going, no, no, we have to finish the math. She didn't want to finish, but she worked a little harder on it. But it does give them a chance to finish some things if they don't have homework when they go home. Again, it's a choice for each child unless the parents kind of say, oh, no, they really need to do their homework. The other thing we've done in the past, if a teacher comes up to us and lets us know that someone's not getting work done, we start working with that child every night during our round here to make sure they're getting, so then they don't have the homework going home. We get it done at school. Try to help them out. I think we appreciate it. Most of the stuff. Some of the other things we offer are games. We have a variety of age, age groups, so games-wise, it's kind of depends on what we have available. But with my morning group especially, I get to get the games out, and in the beginning of the year, the afternoon group was getting games out like crazy. So, but I just know in the morning, I've got, I've got little K-four kids who are playing Sari, and they know, they will tell you if you're playing it wrong. They know that if you get the four, you have to go back four. So it's, I don't know. It's just really fun to play with them and see them learning to play a game. The Yahtzee that I brought in, I changed it, so it's like more like the kindergarten Yahtzee, so we just count how many ones they got, how many twos. So even with a K-four, you know, then I'm just helping them write letters and things like that. So they're kind of, you know, getting a little, a little schoolwork in there even though they don't think they are. Just some other opportunities they can do. Legos, that's a huge hit, especially with my morning crew. Afternoon crew gets to building sometimes, too. If you ever get a chance to come into the room, there are Lego, like, big stacks everywhere. And every once in a while, I have to say, okay, we got to take them all apart because there's just too many. They build and build and build and build onto it, and then they take it apart and make something different, so it's fun. And I was able to, it was really cool last year, I was able to, through like Marketplace or whatever, somebody was selling a whole bunch of Legos, like, god, really cheap, like sixty bucks, I think, for like tons. So we had even more, so they have a good time. And then just large, some large water activities in the gym. Today, I caught a couple kids with hula hoops, basketball. We don't usually get the scooters out. That was an accident last year, so we've been trying to avoid scooters. So we just try to keep it safe, but then give them some chance to run around. If you get there very early in the morning, at about six-fifteen, six-twenty, when my first kids get there, their first thing is, can we do laps? So we have to run around a little bit. I don't run, they do. I'm not running. And then we also offer some arts and crafts. I just have some coloring pages here, but we have done in the past, we made ornaments for Christmas. We've done other projects around each of the holidays, so they can color something to make and take home. Also, in the closet in the makerspace room, there are like twenty million boxes and materials that we can use in there, so sometimes we let them go in there and do that, so. And then some quiet time, you can even see some of them just kind of chilling. We have the one lady, she's got all her lip gloss out, she's all set for the hit. So, and then just even snack time can be just a required time, so. And we do have a TV setup in there, so I can, we can show like school-appropriate videos, things that, I don't know, they really like the, like the animal ones, so. But they also like the other things, too, so, all the Christmas movies. And then just, I just want to leave you a thank you so much for your continued support of this valuable program for our families. We are able to offer care at a lower cost to our families and support our students in a place where they feel safe and comfortable. They don't have to be traveling or going anywhere else. And then just a reminder, students may attend breakfast if they choose, so it's another option for us. That's it. I don't know if I'll live.
What a wonderful service for the kids and the families as well.
They like it, and the families, once they hear, I mean, some of them didn't even know. We had a family come after, like, oh, we didn't know. And then once they found out, yeah, they went up the other side, so.
And it's such a melody for the kids, rather than having to be dropped off somewhere, picked up, taken this little, dropped off somewhere else, and it's just a win-win.
They're right here, and it's just so easy. So, I mean, I was the same way when my son, my youngest, he's going to be twenty-two this year, he's graduated from college, but I didn't want to go take him to a daycare where he'd have to ride a bus. And I was lucky at the time that there was an agreement with the daycare that came in and did it, so I was kind of happy when this came up as a choice, because I know how it eased my mind, so. All right? Thank you very much.
More fortunate than have you. Community reports. Public relations met on December fifteenth. Tara?
Did you give it to us?
We haven't had a meeting since.
Yes, we met on the, the fifteenth. It's sorry. The items that we discussed at that time, we discussed PR related to the weight room and the updates, you know, and the community-wide indoor facilities use, wanted to make sure that community is aware of the wonderful things that we have here that they're available to take advantage of. They did get a nice Facebook post out there with some pictures, before and after pictures, the weight room, you know, Jean and I just went down there and checked it out, and the weight room was fabulous. I feel like kids are really happy, and community members I've talked to are, been very impressed with it, so that's a wonderful addition, so I thank everyone that supported that update. We also talked about making sure that we're getting timely submissions into the enterprise, so we can celebrate all the good things that are going on here in the newspaper. We also talked about the DPI report cards. Caitlin had said that she had, the current ones are updated on the district website, so those are easily available for everyone to view. And then we talked briefly about the possible marketing for Montessori school. That's still in discussion. Don't really have anything that we update on that at this time to share. And then we have coordinator updates, district newsletter that went out, and it was in our boxes, hopefully everybody got the list, latest and greatest. I thought it, they did a wonderful job, and we got a lot of compliments from the community people that received that, so great job on that. And then the brochures were done. We know the CBA basket items. I talked to Mr. Stockrider, and his class was putting together a fabulous assortment of things that they had designed and created that will be going out to new residents that come in via the Eagle Business Association, Lyra Chamber, and some other areas. Having the students design and do it basically is very low cost to the district to have some great promo items out and available, so. And it was a great learning experience for the class, too, so. Big thank you and shout out to Mr. Stockrider for having a participant in that. And I think that was pretty much it. The meeting will be on February? Thursday. January Thursday. I'm looking at my notes, I'm like, no, it's not, it's not tomorrow, it's the day after tomorrow, yes. So that's all I have there.
Thanks, Tara. Buildings and grounds met tonight?
Yep.
Michael?
Thank you. So we talked about the standard process complex signage. Haven't really had much activity since last month through the holidays. It seems like we'll have some information for next month, which eagerly anticipating. We talked about the greenhouse project, a lot of information there. We do have a signed contract. We need some engineering sign off on design loads, whether it's through the manufacturer or the builder, or we have to find someone after to get that signed off. And once that happens, things will start to move fairly quickly, and then we have to decide, probably doing a terrible job here, so just apologize now. But if we have to, we're looking to actually do the construction in fall of 2023, as late as spring or summer of 2024. If, if that date has to move, there's, there's a twenty-five percent payment that will be required. The fundraising seems to be active. She has nineteen different perks so far, one silver level donor of a thousand dollars, which is great. So more to come, more to come. Let's see what else. The next thing we talked about was our facilities report that we had done. The administration has a nice punch list of things that actually have to be completed. The next step is to understand scope and scale of what the reopening would look like as to what the activities would be scaled out to or scoped out to. So that's good to see that we're moving forward there. And then we'll find out, there's another individual that will be supporting this activity. We're going to fight over that as soon. So let's see here. Review and discussion of snow plowing bids. We had the owner of Northwest Services who currently manages our snow removal. Here this evening, discussing about all the things that he does, how long he's been doing it for us. He seemed like he did a good job. He has updated his dollars for his spend once he heard that we were looking for quotes. As it should be, we should be paying our fair share, so with that, we'll be having further discussions about snow plowing in the near future. And then lastly, we had a discussion about, we have a roof up or redo, which is part of the normal cycle. The roof seventeen, which is roughly in the middle of the school, probably to be a hundred ninety-seven thousand all told. The administration did a great job of getting the bids, bringing everything together, submitting it for approval. It seems in line with roofs, roofs are expensive. The only thing we need left is what the actual square footage is for context, so that's all we have.
Thank you. Finance also met tonight? Mitzi?
Finance did meet tonight. We reviewed our vouchers without any questions. We reviewed budget variances with a couple of questions and clarifications. One was the PA system at Eagle Elementary, and one was for periodical of plastic just needed to be classified in the appropriate place than it was, but we got budgeted in as that, so there was that. Also, we discussed the roof seventeen. Most of the questions were answered in buildings and grounds, and so there was really no questions other than, once again, the square footage, just to make sure of that. We had a brief review of the Montessori school financial update and where that was, and we will convene on February four, too.
Thank you. Administrator reports. Are there any reports you guys?
Can I go first? I'd like to point it. Kayla? Kaylee thought of something for me to say. Is that why first, so they can jump in after? One of the things with our fourth and fifth grade, we've been having a little bit of an uptick in some social emotional tables and some behaviors in our public effects, so our student services and special ed are kind of partnering together to implement, while our zones of regulation is something that we already do with all of our Spacade kids, but classroom-wide, that is something that they have been doing for all of our fourth and fifth grade teachers, to kind of get that whole program implemented in their classrooms and get it a little bit on a broader spectrum as opposed to just a higher risk. So that has been a real positive thing that has been happening. Jody Dooley has kind of taken it on and created a whole bunch of presentations and has been going in and doing a whole bunch of lessons for all the kids, which has been really great.
And I appreciate Kayla having them do that because it lets our special ed teachers be able to be teaching everybody, and so it sort of makes a little bit of the stigma of who teaches what, and it's just teachers teaching kids, so, you know, she's absolutely fabulous up there, so I appreciate Kayla having the idea. And then, anything else?
You're talking about, we'll go next.
And then for EES, if anyone is interested, on January twenty-fourth, we're hosting our literacy night at EES. So this opportunity also is a partnership with the Alice Baker Library. We're going to have certified therapy dogs there in the gym that kids can sit and read to that night. There'll be games, there'll be make and take, activities people can do, and treats just to celebrate reading, open house style, all night long. Our 4K info nights have been scheduled for the thirty-first of January and the second of February, knowing that on February seventh is when the open enrollment period starts, so if families are interested in joining our district, that's the first day that they can, you know, make their request known, so we're going to get those information nights out early and right away so that they have the ability to make informed choices. And other than that, we are just in the middle of ready to start testing season here shortly, so the first two weeks back have been, have been pretty great.
Thank you.
We are simultaneously ending first semester and trying to start next year, so it's always a really bizarre time where finals start tomorrow. Those of you who have had children through the district, somewhat more traditional finals are returning, so we are running a final schedule over the next two days with some tweaks from the old model that we're interested to see how they work. And then we will end first semester and start second semester next Tuesday. At the same time, I literally just this evening sent out last year's course catalog and asked to start thinking about planning for next year. So my hope is to have that document along with any potential new courses or additions to CMP by February, so we can get moving forward with that process. So it seems very weird to think I'm trying to end the semester and start a year at the same time. We have sports R full bar going on, so obviously dance is going about every Saturday. We have girls and boys basketball. Boys are playing tonight, girls played last night, wrestling. So attending something is probably possible almost any night of the week here. Holiday concerts, I didn't talk about those, I don't think, in January. They were great. If anyone was able to attend any of them, I might have talked about them in January. Now that I say that, semesters really just kind of wrapping things together, so that's all I got.
Thank you all. Can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Can we wait?
It can't be, it can't be.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Action item. We motion for action item A. Do we have the second reading of the policies?
I make a motion to consider approval of the second reading of the policies recommended by Niola.
Should I get a name on?
Nope, I don't think so. As listed on your agenda.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Action item B.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of the second reading of the following revised policies recommended by Niola and listed on your agendas. Section one thousand administration, section two thousand programs, section three thousand professional staff, section four thousand sports staff, section five thousand students, section six thousand finance, section seven thousand property, section eight thousand operations, and section nine thousand relations.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Action item C.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of the deletion of the following policies recommended by Niola. Policy two, four, one, six, zero, one, parental and police access to instructional material sensitive information, and to policy six, one, four, five, borrowing.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Arnie's thinking we need a motion to make sure the framework policy is raised. Does that on the agenda?
No.
We need a motion to approve the proposed district space and program availability for twenty-three, twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to consider approving the proposed district space and program availability for twenty-three, twenty-four open enrollment applications. I'll second.
Any discussion?
It's the same as last year's.
I didn't change anything other than the numbers.
All those in favor say aye.
Spelling error, I don't know if.
Yeah, I got it. Tracy checked it. I just noticed that, too.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. E. Need a motion to approve the proposed twenty-three, twenty-four school year calendar.
I'll make a motion to consider the approval of the proposed twenty-three, twenty-four school year calendar with the 4K jumpstart.
I have a second.
Any discussion of the 4K jumpstart?
Well, first the calendar, if you don't mind. You just went with the one with the longer break.
Yes, so I had originally sent CMP a couple options. One that was super tight, like literally would have been a six-day Christmas break, a five-day spring break, and Easter break. We would have potentially been done, been done on May thirty-first, but I could not replicate that next year. I would, we would have to be done in June next year, and I was in the midst of Christmas break while I was thinking about this, and we were talking about it, and it just, it seemed really tight. We think families will appreciate the earlier out. We really like the in-service as the day back to break. And then I did, was able, because Easter and spring break will go together to give one, Easter Monday, if you want to call it, as a day off, and then that traditional in-service day. It's still mid-June, it is going to feel a little bit later because it's going to be another week after Memorial Day, but days-wise, I think it makes the most sense. We stuck with the exact same number of kid days and teacher days, so we do have some extra days built in as well.
Can I ask how the, like, for, for example, this Friday is basically?
Yep.
Kids that are just called in.
Yep.
How does that affect like our attendance and our?
So this Friday, from a high school, middle So this Friday from high school, middle school standpoint would probably not meet the threshold for, for attendance for minutes of instruction, but I have eight extra days built into the middle and high school calendar, so that counts. So, um, I think, maybe talking to, I think there's some magical number to percentage or something like that. So like, for example, when the seniors are done early, those days don't not count as days of instruction. And the elementary, obviously, is in school on Friday, so that doesn't impact that.
Huh? We'll need to talk about that. I think on Thursday, you gotta take attendance, though. It's our second Friday.
Yeah, it, it, well, you will talk, but yes. So, yeah, so I mean, I probably don't technically count Friday as the day of instruction because not all kids are, are here. And a good amount are not here as opposed to here. Other questions? Go calendar. And then Katie, you want to talk about four K jumper?
So jumpstart is a soft start approach for our littlest writers who often look like deer in headlights the first few days. They don't even know their own name, let alone, um, having to learn twenty of them at once. So to help sort of these students enter that transition and help teachers really get to know kids, um, the proposal is that, that Tuesday, um, is last names A through L attend. Wednesday is M through Z. And then again, Thursday is A through L, Friday is M through Z. And then that following week, everybody starts together. So, um, it halves the number of kids, and then we're able to sort of welcome them into school and make it a little bit more available for parents, so that they can, so kiddos feel more confident in their, basically, where they're going, because it's very, very brand new for them. So, um, both the four K teachers have supported this and wanted to make it something that was a little bit more manageable for those first few days.
I think it's a fabulous idea. I really do.
I think it's a great idea to tell parents to start complaining about it.
I think it's wonderful.
Um, if someone absolutely, um, has a challenge that would prevent their child from being able to attend at all that week because of the last name, then we'll make arrangements on a case-by-case basis. I won't lash with it on a sign, but if it's, if it's a large enough concern that they want to speak with me about it, then we'll accommodate. You know, I'd rather have a kid there all four days than just saying, no, you can't come. If you can't, do partial. So, um, I, I think we'll be okay for the majority, though.
I assume in your info nights, you will share?
Yep, that'll be part of the calendar. I'll, that will share.
Any other questions on the calendar?
I do, I was just gonna say, tell Katie, um, I do like that you're doing one of the info nights in Polara.
Yes, oh, I forgot to share that. Yes, so the February second, we'll actually be in this room. For families on this half of the district and surrounding areas that everyone enjoys, so they don't have to track all the way over there. So, um, Joel and I are hosted together in here.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. F. Consider a motion to approve the annual notice of educational options.
Motion to approve the annual notice of educational options.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. G. Consider a motion to approve a snowplowing contract.
All right, motion to table it.
Um, and we are continuing, we're testing administration to talk with the people that are using right now. So we do have snow removal still going on.
You gotta buy the plow then. Shovels.
I got a snowbar in home.
All of our administrators died of cardiac arrest. I can't figure out why.
We have a motion to approve a second. All those in favor? District administrator and business managers reports.
Okay, a few things. Um, I think Doris, I'll let you know that we're looking at a, a February board workshop session prior to the February board meeting. We'll be looking at, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four forecast as much as we can. We don't know if there'll be a state budget at that point, but hopefully, uh, we'll get some word of what, what the governor's thinking as, as well as legislators thinking about, um, funding for the school districts. Um, another point, there is a letter that's, that's going around that we should probably participate in. Um, encouraging the legislators to look at the low revenue cap, because we are just barely above it. Close to getting above that as possible, about going under, um, that cap. If that were raised a little bit, would be a huge benefit to the, to the district. So, um, I will probably participate in that. If anyone has any issues on that, uh, contacting our legislators to bump that low revenue ceiling just a little bit. And we may find out more next week at our state educational conference. I know some of you have signed up for that, uh, the eighteen through twentieth. Um, and believe it or not, I checked the weather. It's usually below zero with wind. Every single, this year it's forty degrees with rain, so I don't, I don't, you can't win either way. But, um, in any event, it's usually, it's usually a pretty good, it's a pretty good opportunity to get up some new, new information. Um, I surprised phone call yesterday from Standard and Poor's. Um, they want to relook at our rating in a positive way. Uh, they said we're hearing good things, um, about the district. And, and I think our enrollment might be a little bit more positive in terms of less open enrollees out this year. Uh, maybe not as many in, but, but their big issue was the number going out. So if we can show a, a trend there, I think that would be good. Um, they're really, financially, we're, we're great. Uh, we did help it. We did use approximately thirty-one thousand fund amounts. The last, you know, that's pocket change. We don't even, we don't even do that. So we'll, we're setting off the information that they're looking for, and, uh, this is that one we initiated. They initiated it, so that'd be a very positive, uh, situation that they want to, um, take a look at us again. If, if they don't do anything, we're still, we've still got a good investment grade rating. Uh, but if they don't bump it up, that's still another nice opportunity. And it's always good to have that up there. I mean, as, as we look, um, at our workshop on February, we look at our capital project list, uh, we could be part of that, you know, how we manage that. Uh, we may want to look at some different ways of funding it, whether or not it includes some, some low debt funding. I, I don't know what the point, but, um, if that makes sense, we should at least explore it. And, um, I, with, with interest rates coming up, um, the better rating, the better, the better off we are. So, some good things to start off the new year.
That's great.
Brandon, anything to add?
Nope, uh, just getting ready for that budget workshop and then working on a hammer way of this greenhouse project that Carrie and I have been working on. It's probably every single day that we talk to somebody.
Totally wasn't allowed in my outfit, anyway.
Coming along, so that's not it. Uh, you should be getting, uh, our financial statements from the auditors over the next month, so.
Any questions? Okay, any announcements or board comments?
I just would like to say that I saw some chatter recently regarding people receiving their tax bills and how delighted and surprised they were. Some found that they had to increase the. Oh, no, I said chatter.
I thought she said cheddar.
Not cheese. Not cheese. So anyway, people were very excited about that their tax portion of the school district had declined. And I just would like to take this opportunity. It's fabulous to hear about Standard and Poor's, um, reaching out to us, but it goes to show that when a community supports its school district and the students attend their home school district, that we can all benefit positively, even if our only motivation is our tax bill. If all of the children attend our schools and receive the quality education that we provide here, it is beneficial to all of our community members. And that's all I would like to say.
Can I add one thing to my board comment, and it's not because Mary's sitting here, but it's gonna sound like it's because Mary's sitting here. So after the events of last Monday night where we all thought probably about our CPR certification, um, I just want to give a shout out to Mary who takes her time to get her cross-certified, um, teaches all of our freshmen to do it. It's not up to Mary if they stay up to date on it, but they all have learned how to do it at some point. Um, and it takes time to train all of us. Next one, are we doing it? Next Wednesday? Next Thursday? So I'll be back on, and then she recertifies everyone and does the initial certifications as well. So, I'm doing my plug for CPR. Mary's doing her plug for CPR. Hey, we, we've seen it work. We've been part of situations where it worked. And if you were watching Monday night, I've never seen anything like that in my entire life, so. If you're not certified, get certified. There you go.
So I just wanted to, to hand off that. I mean, that, that trust goes both ways. And I think one of the things that, that we're looking at this year, uh, the fact, I think, the superintendent of the mill said, why didn't you go out and, and, and up your tax rate to pay off some early debt borrowing? And that, that's always a consideration, bear, to say, like, you know, rates are going down, why don't you find a way to keep that up? And I'm thinking, no, because number one, I think with, with what's happened here the last few years, uh, to be straightforward and honest, and in a time of, of high inflation where, you know, it's, it's gotta be hurting people. The last thing they need to do is artificially increase, probably, tax bills. So, um, that was a decision not to, um, pay off any debt early to try to keep the rate up. Others theory that you need to keep debt rate up so you can go off, it, it binds. And, and, you know, if, if we were talking referendum, we need to book our act. Um, and so I just didn't feel like artificially bumping up that rate. Uh, we, we have such a little debt anyways, that's, that's, that's not a factor, so. Uh, but I think you're right. I think that, that trust communication has to go both ways.
Any notes? Okay, um, upcoming meetings and events are listed on your agenda. The only thing a little different is board work session, which will be prior to the February board meeting starting at five-thirty. Um, can we have a motion to adjourn to close session? We have a roll call vote for that.
Michael Eddy?
Yes.
Tara Leroy?
Yes.
Doris Parsons?
Yes.
Jane Reed?
Yes.
Mitzi Reshaski?
Yes.
Zachary Rakowski?
Yes.
Christiana Williams?
Yes.
We'll now adjourn to close session, okay?
Thank you.